That brings us to the meeting proper. Welcome colleagues and staff and extensive line up in the public gallery, welcome. We have apologies for the meeting from Mayor Cull and councillor Lord. I'll move that those apologies be accepted seconded councillor Lofisso. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. I'll confirm that the committee, I'll move, sorry, that the committee confirmed the agenda with the following alteration around standing order 21.1 that option C be adopted, seconded councillor Alder. All those in favour? All those against? That's agreed. Any amendments to make to the interests register? There being none. I'll move that the committee notes the elected members' interest register as attached and confirms the proposed management plan for elected members' interests, seconded councillor Benson-Pope. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Item five, part A reports, Satake Museum report to contributing local authorities. Welcome back, Dr Griffin. Both to this room and to the city limits. Kiora, it's as usual a privilege to be here and let you know what we've been doing at the museum over the last few months. Once again, I'd emphasise that this report covers the period that ended in June and subsequent to this report, there's been a lot going on that I'll report about at the next meeting. It was a period of many highlights, as I refer to in my introduction. Opening the university 150th anniversary exhibition was a big highlight. The museum won three awards at the Museums Art Ero Conference this year, which was very pleasing. And we've been doing a significant amount of outreach, all of that funded by external partners, none of that funded by DCC. We do our work in Dunedin, that's funded by DCC. But of course, the big story in this period was the discovery and recovery of the Moa footprints from Kaiburn River, which, as I mentioned in the report, was a big highlight for us. It's certainly the most exciting finding that's happened in my time at the museum. And the fact that the project was led by a very young member of our staff, Kane Fleury, and we managed to get the majority of the footprints out and recover them was a big, big thing for our institution and it demonstrates the kind of things that we're capable of when we set our minds to it. In that light, another thing I'd like to refer to, it's a small element of the report, but the kind of folks who are now working at our institution, the level of their skills is amazing. And Nissa Maudwaters, our conservation manager, has been selected for the Getty Conservation Programme, which is an amazing honour for her and also for our institution. So we can't do things like recover Moa footprints without having skilled, talented staff. And the fact that we're now able to do this, I think reflects a lot of the work that we've done over the last few years, reinvesting in the collections team and taking the work that we do seriously and looking after our Tonga for future generations. A lot of other things have been going on in the museum, I won't refer to all of them, but I will also point out at the end of the report, there's an extensive section about the outreach that we're doing. And I personally feel that while that isn't directly funded by DCC, and you might question why the museum's doing this stuff all over the South Island and beyond, we see it as a way of marketing the museum as well. I mean, it's great that we're actually involved in directly educating young people about science, technology, engineering arts and maths, but actually, it's a fantastic way of raising our profile out there in the community. And we are seeing some benefits as a result of that. That's just a brief summary, there's a lot in the report. I know you're all busy people, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your questions. Councillor Alder.
The outreach is amazing. And I was just wondering, looking at the report, that in fact Queenstown has agreed to grant £30,000 per year for the next three years, and there's an increase in funding. Do you think that in part is to do with the fact that you're out there and engaging with those communities?
Yeah, I'd like to think so. I mean, I think obviously the question that people in Queenstown would ask is, what are you doing for us? And we can actually demonstrate that over the last couple of years, we have invested a significant amount of time and effort in taking science engagement to that community. And we're serious about it. I mean, we were doing that before the funding started, and we did it because we thought it was the right thing. But it's actually really pleasing to see that the work we've done being recognised by Queenstown Lakes District Council. And hopefully that funding, it's initially for three years, but I'd like to think that they'll see the value in that going forwards.
Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you. I know this isn't in the report because of the time period, but I was interested to know with the James Cameron Exhibition, which has just opened, what has been the impact of that on numbers, attendees at this hugely quiet period?
Yes, it's been a very surprising one, surprising is the wrong word. We've been very pleased with the response to the Cameron Exhibition. We opened the last weekend of the school holidays and the Sunday was amazingly busy, we had a record day in the cafe. But actually, what's interesting is, this time of year for the museum is traditionally very quiet. The schools are back in session and there are not that many tourists around. But we're getting between 50 and 100 people a day going through the exhibition, which may not sound like many, but that's probably twice or three times as many as we were getting the same time last year. So from our perspective, we're already seeing an impact during the slow period that we're in. And that's hopeful going forward, once we get back to the tourist season. So again, I should thank DCC for their indirect support of that. And the city activation was really helpful to us at the start of the exhibition. And on top of that, I should also mention that Niwa really came to the party and they sent their research vessel to Dunedin for the first time in, I think, almost a decade. And that was very much as part of the partnership that, you know, these exhibitions brought. Niwa saw the value of this and saw it as an opportunity for them to showcase what they were doing. So this has been a, again, it's very early days and I'm not going to count our chickens before they hatch, but the initial response to the exhibition's been very positive. And hopefully, if Mr Cameron himself comes to Dunedin, we'll see another boost later in the run. Thank you. Councillor Venvis.
On page 28, it's good to see that the Lotteries funded Toka Digitisation Project reaching a deadline for completion. Is there a dollar value that you can let us know on that external funding? That it's paid by the Lotteries Commission?
Yeah, from memory, that project was approximately, I think, $180,000. I can look up the precise number, but we've had a couple of lottery funding projects recently. So for example, I've just come back from a weekend at Mount John Observatory that was funded by the Tuia 250 Lottery Programme. That's a programme that was designed to support projects that bring communities together during the anniversary of first contact between Maori and Europeans. And the museum's got two projects funded by the lottery there. And the lottery is a very important part of our funding mix. Those two projects, the Tuia 250, we got, one was £230,000 and one was $130,000. So the digitisation project was a couple of years ago and we've just finished that. But I think from memory, as I say, it was about $180,000. So it's significant funding that allows us to do things that we couldn't otherwise do.
And is that digitisation largely available online?
Yes, because of the nature of some of the material, some of the stuff isn't available online. And that's because our Maori Advisory Committee have said that that's not particular, there are certain items that you wouldn't necessarily put online for cultural reasons. But the majority of it is online. And actually, if you visit the museum this week, we actually have just opened a new exhibition on the staircase that showcases some of the items from the digitisation programme. And at the start, at the entrance to the museum, there's a, what do you call it, an interactive kiosk that links directly to the digitised material to remind people that they can do this from home. So the project itself is complete, it was completed on budget, and I think we've done a good job. And we will be looking to get more material from the collection digitised in future years. Particularly the next stage will be the Pacific cultures, the Pacifica material, because we've got a huge amount of that. And we'll probably put an application in sometime in the next few years.
Right, thank you. And on page 19, it talks about some major capital maintenance projects, in particular sprinklers. Now, I'm aware that sprinkler systems have been inordinately expensive for a long time, largely because there's been little competition. You quote a Rawlstone's estimate of one and a half million. Are you in a situation where there is real competition in that area, or are you kind of stuck with the Rawlstone's sort of?
Well, the answer to that question is quite a long one and complicated, but the summary of that will be something like, we have gone out to tender to try and get the lowest possible, or to get the best value. But we also, when you're dealing with material that if it burns, it's gone. And also, believe it or not, museums don't like sprinkler systems, because if they go off prematurely and all your stuff gets wet, that's not a good thing either. So you want to have a really operationally redundant sprinkler system, which gives us a little bit more of a challenge to create, to budget for it. But the fact is that something like 40% of the museum isn't sprinkler protected, and that's mostly the old buildings. And we've got to do something about that. And because at the end of the day, I hate to say it, but you know, if someone were trapped in an area with no sprinklers and a fire goes off, that's not a place you really want to be. But the museum's been catching up on our maintenance for the last few years, and the sprinkler system is probably the most important thing we've got to do in the short term. And that's why, as you can see from the report, we're focusing on it.
Great. And I just wanted to congratulate you, pages 45 and 47, on full attendance of your Pajama Rama programme.
Yes.
And also your yoga with the butterflies. Great to see that you're doing these things, that everybody's getting into them.
Well, thank you. And those two programmes, again, illustrate the fact that while obviously the most important work that we do is looking after our Tonga for the future, we really are trying to reach out to the different communities and offer different activities at the museum, because we like to be a place where people want to come. And a lot of those activities, no, not all of them are free, because we recognise that not everybody can afford to pay. And that's an important thing we have to remember as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alder.
I just had one more question that I forgot about last time was, there had been some concerns about the cycleway, and there's been a lot of really good work done in there to create and enable access to the museum. And I was just wondering how that's working out?
I think it's fair to say that it's a challenge, given the present environment in Dunedin. I mean, there's lots of work going on across the city, right? And it's a good thing in general that we're going to make the city better. But certainly, the issues of parking around the museum and the university are still a challenge. I'm hopeful that some of the initiatives that are planned, like, so for example, the City Bus Loop or, you know, anything like that that comes to pass, will help us. But the fact is, we're running a major tourist attraction that attracts, you know, over 300,000 people a year. And at the moment, the majority of those folks do come in cars. And we need to find a solution that works for the city and that works for the museum in the long term. And I do recognise that it's a complicated issue. And I think a lot of the work that's been done in terms of the parking around the museum has improved things from where they were a year ago, although it's still not perfect. So I'm not going to be critical, because I recognise it's a complicated situation. But certainly, it's a challenge when you're operating what is effectively a tourist business. Some of those tourists do come in cars, and a lot of those tourists, if they're with families, don't necessarily want to walk a long way. So it's a complicated conundrum, and I look forward to working with the city to try and solve it in the long term. Further questions? Would someone like to move the report being noted? Move councillor Staines, seconded councillor Hall. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Staines? Any speakers? I'd just like to pass on my thanks, Dr Griffin, for your frequent attendance at these meetings to keep this council briefed of the activities at the museum. Thank you. As a significant funder of its operations, it's good to have this level of access. And I know that you're a very busy man, and we appreciate the time that you're able to give to us to have this conversation. Just that this is the last opportunity, you'll speak before this council, I would imagine. So thank you for all of your efforts. Well, and thank you again collectively for your support of the museum. Again, you know, the support that we get from DCC really makes the museum possible, and we do appreciate it, so thank you. I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Thank you. Item six, youth development activity update for February through August 2019. Ms Gunn, Ms McLennan.
With the appropriate of the chair, could I ask for our youth councillors to sit here first and answer, and report back and answer questions on that, their component?
You can. I would appear they have more pressing deadlines than some of us.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Hi.
I'll leave it to you to introduce your crew.
Awesome. Kiora, I'm Melissa, and I'm the Chair of the Dunedin Youth Council this year. I'm in year 13, so it's my last year on this council. And yeah, we just had a report in the last six months, who's want to introduce yourself?
Hey, I'm Ben. I'm from Kavannah, and this is my first year on the Youth Council.
Kiora, Kiri Ngawa, hi, my name's Kiri Ngawa. I'm at homeschool this year, I'm a year 11 student. Yeah, this is also my first year on the council.
So yeah, we've been doing quite a few different things this year so far. So we've run a quiz night, and that was open to all the youth of Dunedin, it was free entry, and we were kind of just wanting to get as many youth from different schools to interact. Because if you aren't especially involved in sports or extra curriculums, it's really hard to make those friendships. So just a bit about the Youth Council, we've got 13 Youth Councils this year from eight different schools, but we are doing recruitment later this term, and we're hoping to get one from every school in Dunedin. So the Youth Council kind of like provides a lot of other opportunities for the members. So four of us went to Activate earlier this year, which was held in Christchurch. And it was kind of an opportunity to connect with other Youth Councils and see how they run. So for example, the Christchurch Youth Council isn't under the umbrella of their city council, but then we also got to meet people from Sowin Youth Council and see all the activities that have worked and haven't worked in their cities. And as Chair, I recently got the opportunity to go up to Wellington for Festival for the Future, which is run by Inspiring Stories, and it was a really powerful weekend, kind of just a way to inspire young people and also acts like a way to tell you what you can do next after your degree or whatever you choose to do after school. So yeah. Yeah, I guess that's kind of us. And we also have a lot of businesses that come and talk to us, ask us about what we think on their proposals, or if they're doing like a youth engagement plan, what we think and whether it would work or not. Yeah. I'm free to any questions, yeah.
I do hope you invoice them for your market research. Questions? Councillor Gary.
Thank you for your presentation. I was interested in how you're building that relationship with your school councils. Is the youth council rep from various, from the school, if you take a school, on the youth council, or how are you organising that?
So at the moment, no, not all of us sit on our school councils. But that's something that we want to change for next year's group, because we want to be able to really voice our whole school's opinion, not just our own. So that's something we're changing at this recruitment, which we're, yeah, so that's one of the things.
I have one, and this is following up on that. So if the idea is that all of the school councils are represented at the youth council, is that the plan?
More that our representative sits on the school council, so not, it wouldn't be chosen from the school council. It would be that they would have a place in their own school council?
Oh, right. It wouldn't be a prerequisite to being a part of your...
No.
Oh, great, that's fine. My question's been answered, thank you. Well, thank you for your time and for your efforts, and good luck with your recruitment. Succession planning is important. Are we welcoming back staff now to speak? Welcome back, Ms Gunn, Ms McLennan Kissel. Anything you'd like to add at the outset, or are you happy to take the report as read at this point?
Happy to take the report as read.
Great, thanks. Questions? Councillor Gary.
So I just wanted, first of all, to clarify, I'm assuming it's Queen's High School in the list on page 50?
Of the signatories?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And so I noticed there's only two, if I've got this correct, two high schools involved at this stage of signatories. What are the barriers to other schools' participation or signing up to this, do you think?
So a couple of the schools actually came to the Youth Vision launch and signed up on the night, and then after that, there was a discussion with the Dunedin Secondary School Partnership, which encompasses all of the secondary schools. And so they have signed up on behalf of all of the schools collectively.
Okay. And my other question was around, because I can see that there's a relief going into outreach into communities and to try and develop various things for youth. I was interested to know, I think there's three community boards now that have youth scholarships. Is it one of your strategies to try and implement youth scholarships for all of the community boards? I know it doesn't reach all of the communities, but for all the community boards? That is, in past times, it's been initiated by the boards themselves, but is that something you'd be pitching to them at all?
We hadn't particularly thought to pitch that. I think that the DCC is obviously a key signatory to the Youth Vision, and it should be up to the community boards to think about how they would like to reflect that they, as part of the council, are actually delivering against the vision. So they may choose different ways to do that. Thank you.
Councillor Alder, thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot going on in the city, really exciting things, like the Central City Plan and like the South Dunedin Hub. And I was just wondering how we involve our youth in decision making on those areas, and also how we protect them from doing too much as well.
Yeah, so I think that has been a conversation, just to cover the two that you did mention as examples, in the Central City Plan, actually, the Youth Council were engaged with, by our urban design team, they came and spoke with them, and actually helped set up and invite youth to a specific youth engagement process, event, as part of getting input. And we are looking at youth representation around the South Dunedin community complex. I think that what we recognise is, clearly recognise particularly within our team and others that are engaging within the city, is that youth are a significant part of our population, more than 20%. We have to be more savvy about the ways that we engage with them, but we're certainly thinking about the ways that we can do that differently, through social media, through the networks that they have. So our Youth Council and OUSA and OPSA, and recently met with them and some other young people to get a sense of what might, could work in the future differently in terms of youth engaging with council, but also feeling that they have value in the decision making that comes. So we are looking at some of that work and would be, and are planning to put a report forward early next year with a set of recommendations around that. Thank you.
Councillor Lofisso.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm just thinking of the structure of the Youth Council in terms of governance, or, you know, the leadership positions in the Youth Council. So does the, is there a mana, there is a mana finua rep on the...
Kiri Ngawa.
And so in terms of eventual reviewing and planning, will mana finua, will mana finua, the mana finua rep be a co-chair of the Youth Council alongside the Chair? And also, what representation is there, or what plans are there to make sure that there's representation from new migrant whanau, former refugees and Pasafika?
I don't want to talk to that. Sure. So there is a current mana finua representative, there hasn't been a discussion about that person being a co-chair? That hasn't come up with the groups, we haven't talked about that. The group, the current Youth Council is actually incredibly diverse. We have quite a range of nationalities, including new migrants within that. And previously, also had someone from the Syrian community who's just opted out recently. We think that the group themselves, because I think the current Youth Council's actually incredibly reflective of our own community in terms of its diversity. And we think that that diversity will continue, because they will help invite others into that as part of the recruitment process.
So that's like a happy accident, do you think? So what systemically can we build in to ensure...
We did look at that in the selection process and the recruitment for this year's group. We actually sort of looked at what we wanted in diversity of ethnicity and interest was a key part of the selection process. So we'll continue that, because I think that's worked really well. Sorry, just on that, sorry, it's part of their terms of reference as well, that they have a diverse group.
Councillor Gary.
Yes, just on the question, would it be fair to say that the turnover, because often the leaders are senior students, I know there are some junior students on the Youth Council, but would it be fair to say that the turnover, both Youth Council and Youth Action Group, is an ongoing problem?
I don't see the turnover in the Youth Council as a problem, I think. Occasionally, there are a couple of people who entered this year, and there were quite good conversations with, among the Youth Council itself, around the commitment required, and a couple of people decided they couldn't meet that commitment. But I think there is less flow out from the Youth Council. The Youth Action Committee, which is the 18 to 24-year-old group, has actually been in hiatus for a while, and in part, some of the conversation that I mentioned earlier around how do we engage with youth and how do they have a voice in what happens in the future has come from that. It may, and it may well be, and, well, just prefacing some of that conversation, that in some of the discussion with those groups, perhaps an action committee and the form that it's had for the last 10 years is not the best way forward with that particular age group. So that's why we're doing some more work to engage with other people before we provide some recommendations.
Nothing further. Would someone like to move that we note the report moved councillor Gary, seconded councillor Hall. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Gary? Further speakers?
I just want to...
Councillor Alder. Can you turn your microphone on, please, if you're going to speak?
I just want to congratulate Joy and the team for actually producing this lovely aortiporti Youth Vision. It's a really good outcome of a lot of work and consultation, and it's really good to see that actually, youth are being asked to be involved in key decisions in our community and joining us to co-create our city. So I just want to congratulate you on that and all the work that's been put into it.
I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Thank you. Item seven, funding waste minimisation grants. Mr Henderson. Ms Urbain. Welcome. Anything that either of you would like to add to begin?
Just happy to take questions.
Perfect, thank you. Questions? Councillor Hall.
The waste minimisation levy, is it still the same as it was to government of $10 a tonne?
It's still $10 a tonne.
And we receive 50% back, is that right?
It's approximately 50%. There's also a population calculation involved as well.
So what kind, just roughly, what ballpark figure do we get back for you to use in this system?
That's a question for Chris, because I don't do the budgets anymore.
It varies depending on year to year, obviously, with the closure of the Fearefield landfill during the 17, 18, 19 year, the volume of waste going into Green Island landfill increased significantly, so the amount of levy received for that year increased significantly. So at the moment, it's a bit under $500,000 a year, but depends entirely on waste volumes. And it's waste volumes for the region, not just at Green Island.
So that $500,000, that come back to the city, does it, for waste minimisation or something?
Yeah, it's in accordance with the Waste Minimisation Act and how that money should be spent, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, we're looking at something like $130,000. How does the rest of it get spent? Just ballpark.
So the rest of the funding is for Inverah schools, waste minimisation... So the rest of the funding is for Inverah schools, waste minimisation and education and promotions, and also our subsidies for the likes of e-waste and Kiwi Harvest, all those sort of organisations are subsidised from our waste minimisation funding.
And when these applications come in, who are they assessed by? By internal or is external having input into it for any applications ago?
As assessed internally, by assessors, so we've got a small grants which isn't, so the small grant funds of $500, up to $500, they're received by a waste minimisation officer and authorised, they're open year-round and authorised by Aaron to proceed. Then we've got the community initiatives grant, and that one has been handled by our education promotion officer in the last funding round, but it's now going to be transferred to our waste minimisation officer, and so she's going to work with those community groups. And then the commercial one, the Innovation and Development Fund, that's been transferred to me to oversee now and assess.
And for, sorry...
It goes through council, yeah.
If I might, for clarity, the assessments are made as my capacity as chair of the grant subcommittee, not as chair of this committee, and the larger grants are assessed by the grant subcommittee, which includes community representatives as part of that process.
That's right, yeah.
And in the commercial side, can, it used to be three combined companies had to emerge to apply for it, can a single company apply for it now, or has it got to be a...
The March round was the first time we put that grant out. I'm not familiar of the earlier one, no.
No, under the, under the new, I won't call it a regime, wrong choice of words, but under the new criteria, it can be a single, yeah, thank you.
No further questions, Councilor Gary.
This is somewhat of a rhetorical question, but I hope you'll indulge me.
Why change now?
I wonder if colleagues knew and staff knew that the applicant who got the $40,000 grant was in fact a former aspiring leader from a couple of years ago, so that was great to see that person go on to lead that project. But my second question, which is not rhetorical, was item number 20, paragraph 21, and I was just wondering if you would expand on the statement, there is a growing consumer demand for products and services that have environmental credentials.
So we work quite closely with Waste Minns, which is our industry representative body, on things like, I was on behaviour change committee for some time with that group, so what we are seeing, and particularly also now with some of the legislative changes coming around plastic bags and now more recently people taking, being able to take reusable containers to the supermarket, that there is actually more and more demand coming from customers to see these sorts of initiatives come into place, so they're more receptive than I've ever seen it before.
Can I just ask, does the levy return to us expire? Because it talks about carrying forward unspent money, but is there an ultimate expiry for it?
Basically, the minister has final say on that, so the, there's no specific expiry, but the, not the minister, sorry, the secretary can actually decide whether funds will be stopped or can ask for funds back if they're not spent. Does that answer the question?
Yes, it's at the discretion of government, whether we can carry it on in perpetuity.
Yeah.
So best not risk it. That's, thank you. Questions, Councilor O'Malley.
Sort of a compound question, number, point 11 is the one applicant that received the $40,000 grant for the composting activity, and then we go to the idea that the, the actual, the waste minimisation grant is to develop commercial activities is one of its main, one of its main functions. Where do we get, where is it decided, the proportion of money that comes in from that government grant system coming back, that goes to commercial applications that reduce waste versus, say, social or education activities that go to it? Where do we decide those ratios?
So that's decided in council, like, well, you know, in DCC, so this is why we're looking at, given this is the first funding round that's gone out, and what we have seen in there is that community initiative one was oversubscribed quite significantly. We do see particularly at the community level, a much higher, again, kind of harking back to that earlier thing, a higher awareness and more interest in doing waste minimisation activity. What we saw with the commercial one, we only had two funding applications, so we have to think about how we can best approach commercial and get them thinking in the waste minimisation space. So that's, I think, a bit of a challenge for this September to see how we might be able to get in front of the people who'd be really interested in this grant and to make it a meaningful amount of money for them as well.
So just add to that, so basically that first round was pretty much a best guess at what would be acceptable, and now we're using the information we've got through those funding rounds to actually try and tweak it to something that's more meaningful.
Are we talking about making sure the magnitude of the grants are sufficient so that in point 16, when they talk about going to the provincial growth fund for auxiliary funding and looking at activities that are slightly bigger than, you know, the kind of activities that have been funded to date, such as onshore plastic recycling? Do you think we've, do you think the magnitude of these grants is enough, or we're going to have to put more money into this fund in the long term if we're going to achieve outcomes that effectively result in local industries that are capable of achieving some of our waste minimisation objectives?
These grants are probably going to help companies that have got an idea, particularly if they're just getting an idea off the ground. What I probably expect to see from $70,000 is maybe some feasibility studies, and feasibility studies are really good because it gives them kind of another bite at the apple. So there's also, the Ministry for Environment sits on half of that money, so the other 50% thereabouts sits with the MFE, it's a much bigger pot of money, and they have much more likelihood of being able to get a contestable fund from MFE if they've done their feasibility. So there'll be that, and then there'll be just small scale, you know, there'll be small businesses, there'll be a restaurant or something that want to, you know, get a composting machine, and it'll be pitched at the level that they might be able to do something like that. So it's better than $40,000, I don't think, you know, that went to one applicant, it's just that bit more to be more of an incentive to either go down a feasibility route or to actually get a bit of kit that they might need to take action, waste minimisation.
Councilor Alder.
Oh, I'm happy to move.
Any recommendations?
Yeah.
Moved, Councilor Alder, seconded, Council official, would you like to speak to it, Councilor Alder?
Sort of in the light of the huge movement towards being our circular economy and also using our resources better, I think this is a great move to incentivise small, medium and larger businesses to get into the, I suppose, circular economy and industry and use our resources as well, so, well done.
Councilor O'Malley.
I support this initiative, my real feedback though is that I feel that as we move forward, we, these support very good, relatively small event, small activities, and they might allow us to do some work towards establishing a business case for going to the next level. But, you know, we export our glass to Auckland to be converted into product up there, we've got cardboard to be recycled which is exported, our plastic is all exported, everything is exported. We are not, as a city, trying to establish industries that we would receive stuff from other parts of the country. So achieving two aims at the same time, one being waste minimisation, but the other one being economic development, so I like to see this increased funding going in here, but my feedback is, in fact, I'd like to see a lot more going back in here, and maybe part of the economic development unit being involved as well, looking at combination of both the economic impact as well as the environmental impact. But thanks very much for the report.
Councilor Gary.
It was a delight to see the young aspiring leader that I mentioned, leading the project that got such a significant grant for a composting scheme, and he had undertaken Leadership for Change course at the polytechnic. So that was a delightful outcome of perusing that application. What impressed me, being part of the grant subcommittee that looked at a number of those, all of those grant applications, was the variety and the grassroots aspect of that. And what it said to me was that the community are on board with this and they want to see these opportunities, they want to be part of these opportunities, and so this is a great start, clearly there's more to do, but it's a great start.
If I can just add to that, what we see, sorry.
It would be wildly unconventional.
Can I be wildly unconventional? Oh.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to add my support for this, it's fantastic to see more money available. In terms of how we, when the scheme was set up, it was a trial really in terms of what the thresholds might be, and we may not be quite there yet in terms of the levels of funding that different small groups or community groups or commercial enterprises can access. But I think as a framework, it is a really constructive way of being able to support these projects in the community. It's quite clear that for us to achieve our environmental goals, whether it's around waste or zero carbon or biodiversity, that we're not going to be able to do it, government can't do it ourselves, and one of the functions I think that we have is supporting our community groups and commercial initiatives that can, that can contribute. I was disappointed, I guess, but not surprised at the lack of applications we had for the commercial side of things, but I shouldn't, I mean, it shouldn't have been a surprise. And I think what's, what I'm optimistic about at this point is that to some degree the community has been better primed for it through, particularly through the work that Startup Dunedin have done around encouraging people to think about waste minimisation as a business opportunity and what, and I don't think we've done nearly enough work to support social enterprise in general and the way that we look at supporting economic development as a council and as a city, and what I see this as being is an opportunity to push into that arena where there's obviously no shortage of opportunity for both economic and environmental and social wellbeing outcomes from this work. So I look forward to reading about the outcomes of the funding round that closes in September and will be decided by the next grant subcommittee in November. Councilor Alder, you'll write a reply?
Oh, no, that's all right.
Thank you. I'll put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? That's agreed, thank you. Mr Dixon, Ms Neville. Item eight, the South Dunedin Library and Community Complex Project Update. And you're on time, Councilor Hall? Anything you'd like to add at this point? Happy to take questions?
Yeah, we'll take the report as read, thank you.
Perfect. Questions, councillors? Councilor Gary.
I was interested to know when you, because this report would have been written at a particular time, the negotiations of Pararaba yet to be completed, is that being completed?
It still stands, we're still in negotiation with Pararaba.
Do you have any timeframe on that at all?
We're hopeful that they'll be concluded shortly.
Yeah. Council official.
Thank you, Mr Chair, thank you, I'm just referring to page 67, point 14, that the architects have been engaged. Are the architects local?
Yes, they are.
Council stephen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, when you say, with regards to Pararaba, when you say concluded, helping him find premises or he's out?
Not actually able to say where we're at with that at this moment, yeah.
Councilor Menendez.
On page 67, building surveys, says the initial building survey work is underway with an asbestos survey due to be received in August. Should not an asbestos survey been done as part of due diligence prior to buying the building?
Yes, so there was some information about asbestos, but we need to go check the building out completely. So there is a section of asbestos roof that we're, and then because of the previous use as an ice cream factory, we're just making sure.
So you did know about the major asbestos that was there prior to purchase?
Yes, yes, it was very evident, you can see it in an aerial photograph that has an asbestos roof, yes.
And when councillors made the decision, they were briefed that we'd done a visual inspection where we are visible asbestos.
Thank you.
Sorry, Councilor O'Malley, thanks.
I'm actually just interested in the timing of the relationship between the co-design, which is like 24 through 26, and then the, you've engaged the architect and you're going into concept planning. So how does the, timing-wise, how does the community consultation and the co-design go relation to the actual architectural plans and other stuff being done?
So basically, the co-design, we're working now to set that up, so it's coming in at the concept stage, and it'll be through to, just before developed design starts, so it's through the first two stages of design.
So we'll be speaking to the designer and influencing the designer?
Yes, yeah.
Thanks. Council Alder.
Hi, congratulations on all your work, and I was just wondering how you're feeling about the timeline and how things are fitting in.
I think the important thing to note is that we're taking considerable time with the design, it's very important to get that right, and you'll see in the timeframe that design and construction basically equal time. I think we need to point out that this is a very high-level initial timeline, and it's a very linear one at the moment, and we may be able to phase some of the development. We'll know that more once we've concluded the tenant negotiations, yeah.
But, Councilor, we are aware of the fact that the co-design process builds, necessitates building additional time into the process, and we've made allowance for that.
Yeah, thank you.
No further questions, would someone like to move the report, be noted, move, Councilor Gary, seconded, Councilor Hall, would you like to speak to it, Councilor? Further speakers? There being none, I'll put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Excellent.
Those against? That's agreed. Item nine, Community and Culture Non-Financial Activity Report for the quarter ended 30 June 2019. Mr Dixon remains unmoved. Ms Gunn. Ms Pinfold, welcome back. Taking the report as read, I assume?
Through the chair, I'd just like to make one comment in advance of the report. Councillors may have noticed a significant drop-off in the ROS level, in the ROS satisfaction levels around Lanjuan, Dunedin and Chinese Garden in both quarter-on-quarter and in year-on-year comparison. The ROS survey doesn't really give the opportunity to interrogate that drop-off, but we have noted it, and with the resource available to us now of the audience research budget that's been allocated to our authority in the annual plan, this gives us an opportunity to interrogate that.
that's been allocated to our RTOY in the annual plan, this gives us an opportunity to interrogate that further and is a demonstration of the value of your wise decision to allocate those resources.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think it would be interesting to compare something like Lanjuan to something like Olveston, which are both paid attractions that I would say a considerable amount of the population don't visit. Obviously, the community perceptions are notably different in those two attractions. Can't wait to find out why. Any questions? councillor Gary.
Thank you. It's a question that sort of follows on from what councillor Hawkins said. I imagine that there is a certain seasonal, obviously there's the season for visitors, but also in terms of locals, a seasonal aspect to the satisfaction and so forth. And obviously, we don't need to be worried about the odd percent up and the, excuse me, odd percent down. But I was wondering if you had any, I mean, I obviously read what was written here. Any other comments to make about that in general terms across the different facilities?
Just one quick observation, is that part of the reason that we've switched to collecting stats from the ROS survey on a more regular basis is so that we can get more data and account for those seasonal fluctuations?
Excellent, thank you. And I had another question around paragraph 24, which was around the interpreting service that DCC funded, and said it wasn't well utilised, although it was launched in March. What kind of level of use? Are you able to give any idea of, or any comment around that?
It had quite a low level of use, and I think in part at the time, it was also to do with March 15. And so there were a number of groups, including the Araituru Middle Eastern Integration Coordinator, who took quite a key role in supporting families and individuals at that time. So she is not a trained interpreter, but took quite a bit of that role. We also noted that we had to improve the communication with Middle Eastern families, that although this funding supports a free service for them to utilise an agency, they themselves can ask for that, you know, that doesn't have to be generated from the organisation to say, we can, we will make a booking. The person can say, I'm coming, or the advocate can say this person's coming and needs an interpreter. So that's an improvement that we're working toward with the DHB.
So then, would you say that, would you affirm that this is a really valuable service, even though those elements have just provided a little bit of skewer on it? It's a valuable service? It's a valued service by the groups that have access to it?
Yes, I think it is a valued service because what it does do is allow people to actually get the supports from the specialist service, community services within the organisation. And having recently attended the National Resettlement Forum, language barrier and inaccessibility to services like this in other parts of the country were seen as a huge reason why people weren't settling well in other areas. So I think this, this council's approach, this has been quite innovative, and it is a valuable service. And we'll keep, we'll keep monitoring how we improve, you know, how we can support the use of it as well.
Thank you for that.
Further questions? councillor Faisal.
Kia ora mōtou mahi. I'm just referring to paragraph 28 on the Housing Action Plan. So you're saying that the ROS will be recruited in the coming months? So they'll be up and running by September, or?
Well, it depends on how long the recruitment takes, but we're moving swiftly.
Councillor, thank you. No further questions. Councillor Hall has indicated he's willing to move that we note the report, seconded councillor Newell. Would you like to speak to it, councillor? Further speakers? There being none, I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Item 10, Aretui Orteporti and City of Literature Key Activities and Achievements. Mr Dixon. Mrs Glen Gary, welcome.
Mr Chair, I'm happy to take the reporters' rag. Happy to answer questions.
Questions, councillors? So thorough, the reporting, see. If there are no questions, would someone like to move the report be noted? Moved councillor Staines, seconded councillor Gary. Would you like to speak to it, councillor? Further speakers? councillor Elder.
I was just pleased to note, public art framework, that the first artwork in this programme will be developed in consultation with DPAG staff in Okaha and likely to be placed in the central city. Congratulations on that. It's a big job, and it'll be really neat to have a public art, piece of art in the centre of our city. Thank you.
councillor Gary.
I can't just find it in here, but I recall reading it. Congratulations on the follow-on effect of the Bollonia Book Fair stand. That was so hard won by us as a city of literature, thanks to the teamwork. But the translation that came out of that, that was quite remarkable, so congratulations on that.
I'd just like to add my thanks, I suppose. This is a work stream I've been involved in longer than any other, first as a grumpy community member in the early 2010s, and then subsequently as a member of this and the previous council, involved in the development and signing off of the strategy work, the eking out of operational resourcing to fund the strategy work. And it's remarkable, reading through this, to see it only being fully staffed in 2018. It's been quite a road to get to this point. And I think, you know, over the last financial year, it's a remarkable list of achievements that staff have helped facilitate on what is a fairly insignificant amount of resourcing. And I think it would be good to see that increase in future. Who knows what we might be able to achieve? So thank you for your ongoing work with this. It's a huge part of the city's ambitions, not just around arts and culture, but our ongoing work in social wellbeing and economic development and parks and recreation, and cutting across the entire strategic framework that this city has adopted, this council has adopted, as we had envisaged. And it's really great to see some of that work come to fruition. So thank you to you and your team. Further speakers? You'll write a reply, councillor Staines. In that case, I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Items aren't allowed to be brought to my attention, so that brings us to the end of the meeting. Planning an environment committee next five minutes. How generous. Thank you.